Good evening and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. It is February 25th, 2025, and the time is 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson McHale?
Here.
Bud Metz?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Veneziano?
Boucher?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
Kohler?
Present.
With six present and one absent, there is a quorum this evening. The first order of business is to approve minutes from a previous meeting, our February 11th, 2025 city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderperson McHale for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Hearing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and those meeting minutes are approved. This evening, we have a presentation from the Rolling Meadows Historical Society annual report. And to that, I will defer to Fred Voight. If you please would approach the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sanoika and City Council. It's good to be back.
Happy to have you.
Been back a few times, but not recently. I'm here tonight for several reasons. If I may take a few minutes of time. One is to say, first, happy birthday to the city of Rolling Meadows. Tomorrow is the 70th anniversary of its incorporation. So congratulations. Our year-end report for the Historical Society is in your packet, I believe. And just wanted to highlight a few things that took place in 2024. We had about 700, 800 visitors throughout the year. Number of them were at the June Open House and the Holiday Tree Lighting in early December. We had about 150 school students from Willow Bend School and Central Road School visit us. They do that pretty much every October and November. And we had about 300 visitors on Sundays or by appointments throughout the year. A very busy year. Our duck race was held on September 13th, as I'm sure all of you know, at Kimball Hill Park. The Environmental Committee, the Parks Foundation, and the Historical Society are the three cosponsors. It was very successful. We raised $1,200, $1,250, I believe it was, to be exact, for each of the three organizations to support their programs and our programs. The, another thing I wanted to highlight is that a couple of our volunteers are active participants with the city's Community Events Foundation, attending the monthly meetings, volunteering at many of the events that go on during the course of the year at Kimball Hill Park, National Night Out, just to name a couple of them. This past year, we had a, what we called Hey Barbie event, because Barbie was celebrating its anniversary, its creation, which came out in 1959, so it was very relevant to our museum. This year's program, just to look forward a little bit, is scheduled for May 4th, and it'll be held at the library. The details will be coming available very soon. I've talked with the News and Views editor about that, and there'll be more information coming on that in the future. Very soon, I should say. One of the projects that we've been working on this year, and it's been featured in our newsletter, or your newsletter, is to collect and compile personal memories from early residents of Rolling Meadows as a celebratory event for the 70th anniversary this year. We have expanded that to include stories, not just from people that were here in the 1950s, but 1960s, 70s, 80s. Because that is one of our tasks, is to compile and keep track of historical events in the city, past, present, and future. So, item six. We have commemorative coasters that we have created for the 70th anniversary. It is a set of four. It says, 70th Anniversary, 1955 to 2025, rocking and rolling in the meadows, the Rolling Meadows Historical Society, with the old Rolling Meadows Shopping Center leaf as the logo for these. We are selling them for $20 as a fundraiser. We have already sold out the first 25 that we ordered. We have ordered more. We hope that they will be available as early as this coming Sunday, but whenever we get them, they will be at the museum for purchase, and we will be having them at the community events throughout the year. We've worked with the city manager recently on an asset management agreement. That's on your agenda tonight. I thank the city manager for working with us on that as a succession plan. When I retired in 2019, I talked to the city manager and staff at that time, and I said, we need to do something going forward. There may come a day when we don't have enough volunteers to keep the museum relevant and active. So I'm happy to see that this is for your consideration to approve it. The Historical Society Board, earlier this month, had reviewed it and approved it, so we're good to go with it. Lastly, I just want to thank the city for all the support that it has given this Historical Society and the museum in the past years, and Public Works, for all the support, taking care of the facilities there. We really appreciate it, and couldn't do it without all of your support and help in that regard. Any questions for me on our report or on our activities?
At this time, we'll be taking any questions or comments for Fred Voight, our representative for the Rolling Meadows Historical Society from the council. Okay? No questions or comments at this time. However, we will be presenting a proclamation at this time as well with the Historical Society. So at this time, Fred, if you're representing the Historical Society, I'll meet you up at the front.
Okay.
And we'll see if we have, testing, testing, testing? Testing? Test, test, test? Testing? Testing, testing, alright. I have in my hand a proclamation, a mayoral proclamation stating that, whereas the city of Rolling Meadows has reached a proud milestone, as you had said, marking its 70th anniversary of incorporation on February 26th, 1955, and whereas throughout its history, Rolling Meadows has demonstrated a commitment to community growth, cooperation, and the well-being of its residents as originally planned and developed by its founder, Kimball Hill. And whereas, one of the city's founding principles was to offer affordable housing to returning war veterans, and to preserve this legacy as seen by the Veterans Memorial and the Blue Star Memorial on Kirchhoff Road, as well as many veteran-focused events and programs. And whereas, the citizens of Rolling Meadows have contributed significantly to the city's rich heritage through their dedication and hard work. And whereas, the Rolling Meadows Historical Society was established by the city in 2002 in conjunction with the construction of a replica, mid-1950s-style ranch house and an adjoining education center with its mission to preserve the history of the city of Rolling Meadows' earliest pioneer residents, to provide a representation of life in the 1950s, and to archive city of Rolling Meadows' history from its beginning to present day and into its future. Now therefore, I, Lars Sanoika, mayor of the city of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim, February 26th, 2025, as City of Rolling Meadows 70th Anniversary Day, inviting all residents to join in celebrating this remarkable milestone with various commemorative events and activities throughout the year, sponsored by the Rolling Meadows Historical Society, the Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation, and other community organizations. Thank you very much for all of your hard work and for accepting this proclamation on behalf of the Historical Society. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again, and as stated, we will have multiple events throughout the city commemorating the 70th anniversary of the incorporation of the city of Rolling Meadows. At this time, we will also be returning to our public hearing regarding the relocation of Torix Incorporated Specialty Shop License from 4025 West Algonquin Road to 1645 West Algonquin Road, Rolling Meadows, Illinois. And this is continued from the February 11th, 2025 meeting. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at 7:12 PM on February 25th, 2025. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding the relocation of Torix Incorporated Specialty Shop License from 4025 West Algonquin Road to 1645 West Algonquin Road, Rolling Meadows, Illinois? Please proceed to the podium.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Doing well, thank you.
Sorry, I'm gonna sound like a broken record. I know you guys are sick of seeing me at this point. My name is Michael Torgeman. I'm currently a licensed tobacco vape and CBD specialty shop at 4025 Algonquin Road. I'm here again today to follow up about my request to relocate the business. As you all know, I'm being displaced by the QuickTrip redevelopment, and I've been formally asked to leave by March 31st, 2025. Since being in business, once again, I've never had a single violation. I've always followed all the rules and guidelines, whether old or new. I'm asking to move into the former American Vapor storefront at 1645 Algonquin Road. Once again, it was an established specialty shop before it had closed down. I've already completed all necessary work with the owners of the 1645 Algonquin Road property and reached a lease agreement with them. By allowing me to move, I will be able to ensure my survival, but the most important thing to make sure I'm relocating in a timely manner and not have to be closed for business. Once again, the location does satisfy the location buffer in ordinance 23-13, and I'm also asking the city council to modify the available specialty shop licenses in order to allow me to relocate to ensure my timely departure from 4025. Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding the relocation of Torix Incorporated Specialty Shop License from 4025 West Algonquin Road to 1645 West Algonquin Road, Rolling Meadows, Illinois? Alright, hearing none. Let the record show that the public hearing closed at 7:14 PM on February 25th, 2025. For the mayor's report this evening, I am pleased to share that last week, on behalf of the city of Rolling Meadows, I accompanied other mayors, village presidents, trustees, and alderpeople in the Northwest Municipal Conference to continue to advocate for responsible budget management for the people of Illinois. Specifically, city manager Ruff Sabo and I spoke with state representatives and senators ahead of the governor's 2026 budget address to prevent unnecessary property tax increases for Rolling Meadows residents, address public transit, and advocate for fair Tier 2 public safety pension funds. The governor's proposed budget maintains the 2025 Local Government Distribution Fund allocation to municipalities, and lawmakers were open to discussing legislation related to improving public transit and Tier 2 pension reforms. Manager Sabo and I expect to return to Springfield in April to stay current on any major discussions related to these and other matters affecting Rolling Meadows and the state. Manager Sabo and I appreciated the genuine interest our colleagues in Springfield continue to show us on these issues, and I will continue to keep the council and the city up to date on news from our state's Capitol. With that, are there?
Mayor, before we get to-
Oh my goodness, we had to close this, didn't we? Yes?
No, you did a perfect job of closing, but we do have another public hearing on the Annexation Incentive Agreement for the property located at 1384 Vermont Street in Rolling Meadows. It's on the agenda. So I apologize if it's not on the script.
Oh, I see. Very well, alright. Okay, we will hold off then on ward reports this evening, and then return to our public hearing to open up a public hearing on the Annexation Incentive Agreement for the property located at 1384 Vermont Street in Rolling Meadows, Illinois. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at 7:15 PM on February 25th, 2025. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about the Annexation Incentive Agreement for the property located at 1384 Vermont Street, Rolling Meadows, Illinois?
There's a typo, and I don't know if it's gonna be an issue, but it says Rolling Meadow instead of Rolling Meadows in the agenda, so I don't know if the spelling error is going to be an issue later.
No, that's not a substantive issue, but thank you for bringing that up.
Noted in the public hearing for the agenda. Thank you, Alderman Boucher. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the Annexation Incentive Agreement for the property located at 1384 Vermont Street, Rolling Meadows, Illinois? Alright. And once again, I will ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak regarding the Annexation Incentive Agreement for the property located at 1384 Vermont Street in Rolling Meadows, Illinois. Hearing none, let the record show that at 7:17 PM on February 25th, 2025, the public hearing was closed regarding the Annexation Incentive Agreement for the listed property. With that, are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman Kohler and then Alderman Boucher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, as a follow-up to our committee of the whole meeting last week, I took on a task to look into air quality monitoring, which was brought up as part of the sustainability plan as chair of the Environmental Committee. I did review those materials, the two monitors that were being considered, and the item was tabled, by the way, was the Purple Air Monitor, the Clarity Node S Monitor, associated with the University of Illinois Chicago Air Quality Project. Let me just say that there are two primary reasons to monitor air quality. The first is for climate-related issues, and the second one is for public health. The Purple Air Monitor only monitors particulate matter, which is only a public health issue. It does not monitor any gases associated with climate change. The second, Clarity S Monitor, monitors both particulate matter, which is, particulate matter is generated generally by smoke, dust, the small micron-sized particles that get into the lungs and can cause health-related issues. Air quality associated with climate change is carbon dioxide, carbon dioxide and NOx. The second monitor does monitor NOx, but not CO2. None of them, neither monitor evaluates the six things required by the EPA. The EPA requires six gases to be monitored, and they are monitored by the state, which are nitrogen oxide, carbon monoxide, sulfur oxide, lead, ozone, as well as particulate matter. Neither monitor will meet the needs of monitoring for climate change. By the way, I'm redressing this because I was asked during the committee of the whole, as well as individually by some council members, neither one will monitor for climate change-related gases. The city, the Chicago Agency for Metropolitan Planning, CMAP, does provide monitoring of this for the general metropolitan area, and I would suggest that we just stick with that and not proceed with monitoring with these two that won't meet our environmental needs of the Environmental Committee or necessarily our health-related things. The Environmental Committee will continue to review the monitoring processes, as well as those being monitored by the state of Illinois EPA and CMAP as we move forward. That's the end of my report, and I will submit this respectfully to the deputy city clerk for inclusion in minutes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Alderperson Kohler. Alderperson Boucher?
Just wanted to make Ward 5 aware that the high school will be hosting two large events over the next two weekends. We are expecting higher-than-normal traffic, as there will be 50 schools this weekend for Jazz in the Meadows, and an equal amount of schools the following weekend for a color guard competition. So the back gates will be open, expect some street parking, expect increased traffic through the ward on both of those weekends.
Thank you. Are there any other ward reports this evening? Alright. Hearing none, at this time, we will open the meeting to the public for 20 minutes. In order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials, and to guarantee to the elected officials an order in dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the city council. Per rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. First, that each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record; that each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the city council; that questions and or commentary shall be limited to city business; comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order; commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present; discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any manner. We have three signatories on the sign-in sheet. I will begin with Roxanne Summer.
Good evening, everybody. I want to, again, say what I always say, but it's from my heart. Thank you all, all of you, for watching over us and helping us as we need. I really mean this. You guys are not even smiling, but please, this is from my heart. Okay, now, the thing I want to talk about is, you mentioned S missing on Meadows. And this is kind of like that, where I've been here a couple of times where there's supposed to be a meeting and it's not, and I try to be on everybody's mailing list. But if even you look at News and Views for January, January, February, it says Veterans Committee meeting on the 25th. If you go online and you click on that link, it changes to 27th. So that these things are happening. My question is, and I don't expect an answer right now how this works, is if there's a proofreader before this information comes out to the residents? Because those kind of mistakes, they happen, not every day, but often enough to where, I live on the south side, call myself a south sider, and it's a journey back and forth, 40 minutes almost, you know? So if somebody could look into that, if we have a proofreader on the stuff that goes through to us, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much, and God bless you all.
Thank you. The next signatory on the sign-in sheet is Fred Voight.
Hello again. Fred Voight, representing the Rolling Meadows Historical Society Museum. I'm just here and signed in if there are any questions or discussions on the asset distribution agreement proposed resolution. I'm here to answer any questions or help with the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, we also have Michael Torgeman? Okay, so just for the record, we have the signatory, but it was for a comment on one of the public hearings. And so the individual has requested to forego speaking during the public comment period. With that, we can move on to our pending items. Item A, ordinance number 25-12, to amend Section 637A of the city code in order to reduce by one and increase by one the maximum number of Class A1 liquor licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows, Casa di Luigi LLC slash Casa di Luigi LLC, doing business as Casa di Luigi, at 5500 New Wilkie Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson McHale?
Yes.
Bud Metz?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to item B, ordinance number 25-13, to amend the city, amend the Rolling Meadows City Code with respect to the application and issuance of business licenses in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is- Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Bringing us to item C, ordinance number 25-14, to adopt enabling zoning regulations for electric vehicle charging in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item D, ordinance number 25-15, to amend bicycle parking zoning regulations in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
It's removed.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item E, ordinance number 25-16, to modify zoning regulations concerning tobacco, vape, and CBD shops and smoking lounges in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Alderman Bud Matts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if all of the vape shops were run as efficiently and as honestly as the one at Torix, we would, it would be a real treat. And so my understanding of is that this is not necessarily to be passed in order for him to be able to still successfully move his business. Is that correct?
That's correct, Alderman. We've got an administrative way to do that, just in this particular instance.
So at this point, I don't see the need to change our regulations so that we can do our very best to make sure that we only attract the very finest of businesses in this industry, because it's a serious industry which has an effect on the health of our citizens. And so I'd like to have whatever precautions that are, could be in place, remain in place. So I'll be voting against this. But it is absolutely not a reflection on Torix and the way they operate their business. We really appreciate their honesty and actually the way they've come forward to us several times to speak at public meetings, and it's really appreciated.
All right, are there any other comments or questions regarding this ordinance? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
No.
O'Brien?
Yes.
And Boucher?
No.
That's four in favor and two against. This ordinance is adopted. This brings us to item F, ordinance number 25-17, which is to amend physical fitness facility zoning regulations in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to new business this evening, item G, which is a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for February 25, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Kohler for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the payment of bills on warrants, the bills on warrant? Hearing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to our consent resolutions, which consist of five items, items H through L. Does any alderperson wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Yes, Alderman Kohler?
Item H, please.
Are there any other items that the council wishes to remove at this time? Okay. Seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the four resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
It's moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderman Boucher for the second. The four items consist of item I, Resolution Number 25-R-15, to award a contract for 2025 street maintenance, crack ceiling of various city streets to patriot paving maintenance in an odd-to-exceed amount of $50,000 in no sense. Item J, Resolution Number 25-R-16, to approve the purchase of one 2024 Ford F250 Super Duty pickup... (sigh) Sorry. Super Duty pickup truck replacement of Rolling Meadows 354 FD 652 through Golf Mill Ford in the amount of $56,786.70. Item K, Resolution Number 25-R-17, to renew professional services agreement with Thompson Elevator Inspection Service Incorporated. And lastly, item L, Resolution Number 25-R-18, to authorize the city manager to accept a collaborative bid for electricity supply for city facilities for up to three years in its term. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings us back to item H, Resolution Number 25-R-14, to approve and authorize the execution of an asset distribution agreement between the Rolling Meadows Historical Society and the City of Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation. Is there a motion to consider this resolution? Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. And I misspoke. This is not to consider, this is to adopt or approve the resolution. Do I need to repeat that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Kohler, this is an item that you pulled, so you get the first comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question either for anybody at the DS who understands this, probably your city manager or Mr. Vogt. What are the assets? Does that include the building? Does that include the property? Is the property the city's? Is it the Park District? No? I don't understand what the assets are.
Sure.
Please.
The assets that are outlined within the agreement identify those items which are owned by the Historical Society, which include the contents within the building and any sort of collateral material thereof. The building itself is owned by the city. The ground on which the building was built is owned by the Park District. And so when we have this asset, the asset distribution agreement, what it is saying and setting forth is that, in accordance with the establishment of the Historical Society and its incorporation with the state, if it were to dissolve, what the state requires in the incorporating documents is that the assets of the Historical Society be distributed to a 501(c)(3) entity. Because that was never defined, there was never any sort of established succession plan for who that 501(c)(3) would be. In conversation with Mr. Vogt and the Historical Society, we identified that the CEF would be a functional recipient of assets in the event of dissolution of the Historical Society. So it would be the contents within the building that the Community Events Foundation would ultimately become the successor owner of. The building would continue to be owned by the city, so that's the distinguishing ownership.
Okay, thank you for that. Very good explanation.
Of course.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments for discussion regarding this resolution? All right. Thank you again, Mr. Vogt, for being here in the event that there were additional questions or discussion. Hearing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This brings us to other business and reports. There are no mayoral appointments this evening, and we have no city clerk report. And so this now brings us to our city staff reports, and as a reminder, there's no discussion during the staff reports. For community items of interest, I will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's 2025 calendar of community events is now available on the city's website, Facebook page, and at City Hall. Be sure to reserve these dates to enjoy the concerts, parades, fests, and other special events in Rolling Meadows coming up this year. The city's Human Services Department is offering a free short-term guardianship clinic taking place this Friday, February 28, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at City Hall. Upon completion of the course, participants will have in hand notarized and legally binding documentation. To register, contact the Human Services Department at 847-870-2695. To raise funds for the Illinois Special Olympics, the Rolling Meadows Police Department and Friends will once again take part in the Polar Plunge this Sunday, March 2, diving into the icy waters at Main Beach and Crystal Lake to raise awareness and money for the Special Olympics of Illinois. Show your support for this organization and the Rolling Meadows Police Department team by cheering them on and/or donating to this worthy cause. The city's Human Services Department is also offering a free mental health first aid class and certification on Thursday, March 13, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Rolling Meadows City Hall. Targeted to adults, this course will teach people how to recognize the signs of mental health or substance use challenges in adults 18 and older, how to offer and provide initial help, and how to guide a person toward appropriate care if necessary. Classes are limited, so please sign up soon by contacting the Human Services Department, specifically Marisol Gonzalez, by emailing GonzalezM, that's G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z-M, at cityrm.org. And the last announcement is an encouragement to our community to take a look at the planned Rolling Meadows website. A link to it can be found on the city's website, cityrm.org, where you can find the final draft version of the Kirchhoff Road Corridor Plan. That item is going to be proceeding to the city's Planning and Zoning Committee for review and ultimately a referral for adoption to the city council. So highly encourage the community to take a look at those documents as those are moving into their final form. That's it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The financial report is in the packet as well for January 2025 financials. And if the council has any questions regarding the report, they can please contact Finance Director Tockington. Similarly, the March 11, 2025 city council draft agenda is also available in the packet. And if council has any questions regarding the agenda, to please contact City Manager Rob Sabo. At this time, are there any matters not on the agenda? Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick update here. Excited to announce that in collaboration with the Park District is, the Park District is starting to do a Rolling Meadows Residents Art Exhibit starting March 20 at 10:00 AM in the Adult Activities Center at the library, and I hope to continue that. It'll gain some great momentum, so stay tuned for more announcements. There are postings from the social media team and flyers from the Park District.
Excellent, thank you very much. Are there any other matters not on the agenda this evening? Yes, Alderman Boucher?
We had a library meeting last week, and it went really well. They are having a Friends of the Library book sale coming up in March, where they are inviting teachers from Rolling Meadows schools to come in and look at books before the sale opens to the public. So those flyers and invitations went out to all teachers. Next month's meeting is March 12, and Alderman Kohler will be attending for the city council.
Thank you very much. Are there any other matters not on the agenda this evening? All right. Hearing none, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session under Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Personnel and under Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Purchase or Lease of Property. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding going into closed session this evening? Hearing none, the question is, shall we enter into closed session? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. Thank you.